First, I want to begin by acknowledging Eric Villanueva, our legislative assistant, who is going to be having his last meeting staffing the AGE Committee. So we want to thank him for all his good work.[17.14][17.14](APPLAUSE). And I know he's going on to elsewhere in the city family, so we look forward to continuing to work with him. Perhaps we should start with any citizen comments that we may have? Don't have any? All right, we will. I'd say if there's no objection, but obviously there won't be. To put items five through 10 on the consent agenda as note and file items. And then if we could hear from the city controller on item number one.
Item number one, City Controller Report Relative to a Performance Audit of Citywide Use of Service Contracts.
Hi, Sarah Glick with the City Controller's Office.
Cynthia Varela with the Controller's Office.
On May 7th, the Controller's Office issued a performance audit report on the city's use of personal service contracts. The overall objective of the audit was to determine whether departments' use of outside contractors was justified and in the city's best economic interests. In general, the audit found that the city's current contracting practices do not provide adequate assurance that outsourcing services is the best use of the city's limited resources, particularly when we're talking about those services that fill a long-term, ongoing need. Our specific findings included, first, that the city lacks sufficient internal controls to ensure staff follow contracting policies. We found that there is a variety of contracting requirements and guidance that are available in various places for city staff to refer to. However, there is no single comprehensive manual that clearly outlines contracting process on the personal service contracts for city staff to reference. We also found that the level in which the departments comply with the city requirement to have a department contract coordinator varies, and the purpose of this coordinator is to ensure compliance with the city's contracting policies. As a result, we found that not all departments are aware of, nor do they consistently comply with, the city's existing contracting policies and procedures. Our second finding is that the city cannot be assured that it's more cost-effective to contract for services than use city staff. City Charter -- sorry, City Charter Section 1022 allows departments to enter into contracts when it is determined that the work can be performed more economically or feasibly by an independent contractor than by city employees. When outsourcing can be justified based on feasibility, such as there is insufficient staff to do the work, the city charter does not require departments to conduct a cost analysis. However, it is a prudent business practice to analyze the cost of any potential decision. Since most justifications appear to be based on a qualitative assessment of feasibility rather than cost-effectiveness, the city cannot be assured that contracting for services, particularly, like I said, when they fill a long-term need, is in the city's best financial interest. For example, we noted several contracts that provide services that will be necessary on a long-term, ongoing basis, including graffiti abatement, landscaping maintenance, assistance system maintenance, and telephone installation. Departments have outsourced these services for years without any analysis on whether it would be more cost-effective to bring these services in-house. Departments should analyze whether, over the long term, it is more cost-effective to hire the requisite number of staff. Departments should also clearly link the costs associated with contracting out for these services in any budget request that they would submit for additional staff, so that city leaders have adequate information to make decisions about staffing levels. Our third main finding was that the city's charter bus program may not be the best use of the city's limited funds. The city spends more than $3 million a year of Prop. A local return funds on the city's charter bus program. This program provides free or subsidized charter bus services to a variety of community groups for recreational employment and educational purposes. We noted that destinations in the past have included Disneyland, beaches, Cabazon Outlet Mall, raging waters, and Hollywood Park. The charter bus program is a special public service. However, now may be an appropriate time to reexamine free or subsidized charter bus trips to recreational destinations to ensure that the use of Prop. A funds for this program does not result in underfunding for other critical public transportation projects or programs. Our fourth main finding was that the contracted administrator of the city's Clean and Green Program is not selected through an open competitive process. From the inception of the Clean and Green Program in the 1980s, Los Angeles Conservation Corps has been named as the city's contract provider and, in some ways, was considered an extension of the city. Because LACC is named as the administrator of the Clean and Green Program, no RFP is issued to select a service provider. As such, no other organizations have ever been given the opportunity to compete to provide the service. Without open competition, there's no assurance that the program is operated by the most qualified organization at the most cost-effective price. Given the city's current financial situation, city leaders may want to reconsider the model in which LACC was selected in order to provide greater assurance that taxpayer dollars are maximized. Our last finding is that contract monitoring procedures need to be strengthened. For example, we found that the Public Works Office of Community Beautification's contract with the Los Angeles Conservation Corps does not adequately define the scope of work and lacks a detailed description of deliverables, expectations, and allowable expenses. In addition, OCB staff does not adequately monitor LACC's performance. OCB also does not perform a detailed review of financial documentation submitted by LACC to support quarterly advance payments of $380,000. For example, we noted receipts for restaurant meals, staff's cellphone bills, and a DJ, which, when we discussed with OCB staff, they agreed was questionable.
Thank you. Let's see. I wonder how we should do this. I want to hear from some of the individual departments and then I'd like to come back and ask you a few questions. But I'd like to hear from -- let's start with LAPD and DOT to get their feedback on how well they've been doing in this regard and whether there are changes they could be making to handle this more appropriately. We look like we're short on chairs up there, so maybe we can grab an extra one.
Good afternoon. I'm Maggie Goodrich. I'm the commanding officer of Information Technology Bureau with the LAPD. We are preparing a formal written response to the controller in regard to all the recommendations where LAPD is actually mentioned, so I don't know if you just want me to provide some general information at this point or...
If you have a general sense of how well LAPD's been doing in this regard and whether you had been closely focused on this before, or whether this is sort of the first time that you've given this close attention because of the audit.
Sure. The contracts section, it's actually the grants and contracts section within the LAPD, is reported to me for about six months now, and we have been looking at -- actually, probably about eight months. And we've been looking at this issue prior to the audit, and the audit certainly helped bring some issues to light, but I do have staff assigned specifically to looking at all department contracts. We do have a policy where anybody, any entity within the department actually entering into any sort of contract, for whatever reason, actually has to come through my section so that we ensure there's a central unit focused on the contracting process, making sure we're following the rules and guidelines, and also meeting with the city attorney and running everything by them before we engage in any contracts. And we're also developing a central tracking system for all of our department contracts, so we've got one place where we go to take a look at anything related to contracting.
So how long do you think it would take before LAPD is actually following all of the guidelines that should have been followed all along by all the city departments but we're now focusing more on?
I would say that, in my opinion, we're there. We've taken -- we've been passing the audit back and forth as far as meeting with the controller and talking about their findings for actually a few months now. So as far as anything that they've raised, I think we've got things in place. We have staff in place specifically to look at those internal controls and to ensure that we're complying with the city's contracting process. So at this point, looking at the findings of the controller, I'm not seeing any area where I feel that today we're not in compliance, we're not following what they've asked us to follow. The only thing that's still in progress is that development of that central database to track all of the contracts, and that should be done within the next couple of months.
And you'll have a written response to the controller's audit?
Yes.
When do you think you'll have that ready?
I can't recall if the controller asked for them by a certain date, but I think it's in June, correct?
Yes, June 7th.
Great. Thank you. And if we could have an answer to the same questions from DOT.
Yeah, LAPD has also been reviewing internally what could we possibly address, the issue of complaints from the charter bus program. We decided that there is an opportunity for us to review the procedure of the way we handle complaints coming in from the charter bus program, and we plan to meet the deadline of June 7th of having written response to that particular observation by the audit.
How do you think DOT was doing before this, and are there substantial changes that will be planned afterwards?
DOT has three other types of fixed route services in which we have a very robust system of review and response to complaints. The charter bus is a fairly different type of service, and prior to this audit, we had not paid sufficient attention to the feedback. What we did do in the past was, depending on what complaints we received, we responded to the complaints, reacting rather than being proactive. So I think the focus is going to be coming up at a system of checking with the originators of the trips to make sure that their needs were met, and if there were any concerns, they would be addressed in a timely fashion in a more proactive manner.
Now, of course, this isn't all a complaint-driven issue. It's also a question of when the contracts are first extended, whether we've looked at whether they could be done more efficiently in-house from the beginning. Were we doing that?
The charter bus program is slightly different from the others. What we actually do, we qualify a list of bus providers, and we use them on an as-needed basis. So it is not something that we use -- a particular provider is not used continuously, but only if their trip is required, and then we will put that into place.
Okay, well, thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing your written response as well, once that's available. If we could also get representatives from Public Works and ITA to chat with us on these same topics, that would be great.
Jim Gibson with Board of Public Works.
We were very pleased with the findings related to ITA and that our contract administration was found to be excellent as far as following city procedures. I think for us, the changes will hinge on any citywide policies about changing how the city does the 1022, whether it's a requirement to have a financial analysis incorporated in the 1022, and that was really a direction to the CAO, so we're looking to see if there's a citywide direction about that.
Okay, and what about the other departments?
Thank you again, Jim Gibson with Board of Public Works and speaking for Office of Community Beautification. We also appreciate the findings and the work done by the controller's office. We -- the audit primarily focused on monitoring efforts for the OCBs and on the 1022 process. One of the findings was that we don't do annual evaluations for our community-based organizations. We do weekly and monthly evaluations and monitoring reports. In fact, we will certainly be able to do the annual evaluations as well. We also do significant monitoring of our CBOs in their graffiti removal efforts. We are, however, limited in staffing. The office has a 40% cut in positions, so we do have some limitations in terms of what we would like to do and what we physically are able to do, given our staffing levels. With regard to the 1022 process, we agree with that, and we certainly will do a 1022. There was a report, however, done by the CAO in 2000 that clearly indicated that there was a cost benefit to using the CBOs. We have, I think, 16 CBOs who take care of their areas. They employ youth in those areas. They pay them a living wage, so on its face, it's clearly certainly a benefit to the city in operating that way. But we have certainly no objections and will, in fact, comply with the 1022 process. With regard to the contracting procedures, this audit dealt with maybe 5% of what we do. Most of our contracting is done within the bureaus of engineering and sanitation. We were the subject of an extensive, probably unprecedented, level of audit a couple of years ago, and according to that report, we had the best practices of anybody they had audited to date and were, in fact, cited as a positive example to the AGE Committee in a report by the controller's office. We also are, again, preparing our detailed responses, and those will be available to the controller's office June 7th.
Any other departments that are represented here that we should hear from? If not, a few questions for the controller's office. I wonder if you could explain for the public the importance of Charter Section 1022 and exactly how the analysis that has to be completed is done?
The 1022 process works when a department is considering contracting out. They submit a form to the personnel department stating that -- I think it's for an analysis from the personnel department in order to determine whether there are existing classifications within the city that can perform the work. If no existing classifications exist within the city, then the department then has authorization to go contract out. If there are appropriate classifications, and maybe they're within a different department, the department -- that the department that requested is asked to speak with the other departments that have those positions in order to determine whether they can provide some staff to perform that function. And if that's not the case, if the other departments cannot provide staff, then the requesting department submits another form to the CAO's office, and then they're getting an analysis based on whether it is more feasible to contract out or whether it is more cost-effective. And as we found that most departments base their justification on feasibility rather than cost analysis. And then the CAO then will make the determination that, yes, it's more feasible to contract out.
So it doesn't have to be more cost-effective?
It does not have to be more cost-effective.
And the department doesn't have to take that into account?
The department does not have to take that into account, no.
So we could have a number of contracts that are costing us money when we could be doing it in-house at a lower cost?
It's possible.
Okay. I notice I have a speaker slip here, so why don't I ask Julie Butcher to come up from SEIU 721.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. On behalf of the workers representing SEIU 721, we've been looking at the -- involved in fixing the contracting procedures with the city as long as I can remember. And as much as we appreciate this report from the controller's office, we'd actually appreciate a full-on audit. The city spends hundreds of millions of dollars on contracts. We expect that the city's oversight of those contracts would be absolute and that we would spend the public's money without spilling a drop. 10 years ago, these procedures were adjusted to make sure that the cost-benefit analysis was included in every contract, that every city department, including proprietary departments, including special funds, including political offices, were making the best use of city revenues. The agreements with all six of the coalition unions and language in 18 bargaining units requires notification to the unions at the point at which a contract is being considered, because it is that point that the best public policy is used to deliberate about the most cost-effective and best way to provide the service. We believe that the procedures that the city uses to evaluate these contracts absolutely by charter require a cost-benefit analysis on every contract, but it's also prudent public policy that you would want to make sure that you're using every penny that you have in the most prudent way. And so where there are contractors, the city has adopted a worker-retention ordinance, a living wage ordinance, a responsible contractor ordinance. I would ask that a comprehensive analysis be done to combine all of that analysis, again, to make sure that when you contract out work, it is not simply to find a way of providing a service cheaper on the backs of those workers. There needs to be regard for local hiring, for local opportunities for businesses that live here, that employ people here. There's a lot of work to be done on this topic. You are not by any means done with this.
Don't go away. I have a question for you. So this was passed 10 years ago?
And '20, and '25, and yeah, it's been...
Well, you've observed this one. How did the implementation work from your perspective? Was it implemented for a while and then gradually moved to just feasibility or the ability to evaluate it in that way?
Well, yes, exactly. And so it's time to look at it. It's time to -- there were a series of rules actually promulgated by the CAO's office that were implemented and worked for a really long time and probably need to be shored up, and folks probably left that know about it, and I think the analysis tends to, over time, subside. But given the moment we are in financially, it seems like it's time to make sure. If it makes sense to do by contract in a -- that is the most cost-effective and operationally feasible way, then let's do it. But let's make sure that we're doing it openly, transparently, with an eye towards providing the most cost-effective service.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We could have a representative from the CAO come up to speak to this.
Good afternoon. David Luther from the CAO's office. I don't have the background that Julie Butcher does on this issue. She, you know, goes back actually quite a few years, and I'm rather new to the contracting process, but I did talk to Miguel Santana, our CAO, about the audit in general and generally what it prescribes, but really, I'm here to say two things, that we certainly agree with the major conclusions of the audit. Contracting, as it's implemented in the city right now, is centralized within the departments but not centralized citywide. Miguel believes there's some provenance that could be made at that level, which is basically trying to -- there was a recommendation to have a citywide contract manual. I think he would agree that that would be a very good step to take. Some of the policies that Julie Butcher had mentioned, I think he would agree would need a fresh look, maybe a review of how they're being implemented, how they could be strengthened. His only comment, he's certainly willing to undertake some of the work called for in this audit. Our only caveat would be that, just simply, you'll hear it from many departments, because of staffing shortages, we're not able to actually dedicate a full-time person to this effort. It's critical. It's important, and I think it could certainly improve, actually have some fiscal impacts if we could strengthen some oversight, but we are challenged, just like every other department, in dedicating a significant amount of resources to this right away.
Yeah, that's a problem I've encouraged the city to address at every opportunity, is where we have the ability to create an efficiency, to then say, well, we can't afford to dedicate a staff person that would cost us $100,000 to save us $10 million. We have to avoid putting ourselves in that kind of a box, I think. But I would encourage us to do that. I may come back with a motion to have us go further. But thank you. I appreciate that. I'd ask the controller's office, what do you see as the primary obstacles that departments face when they try to engage in this process and follow, you know, the city process and procedures that were originally laid out?
I would just reiterate what we've already heard, is that the level of staffing within the departments that oversee this process, I think is probably one of the biggest obstacles. And then also the fact that people don't know where to look for guidance on what they're supposed to do. But I think with ERIP, we've lost a lot of the institutional knowledge, people who know the process, and the risk now is greater that these problems will keep occurring.
So if we need to dig back and find some institutional memory, we could bring somebody back on a short-term contract, of course, if that turns out to be key. But again, it sounds like not dedicating enough staffing for something that may save us considerable money in the longer term is perhaps an obvious solution.
If I could, I'd just like to comment on what the Department of Public Works does in its management of its service contracts. We have an automated system. It's called the Personal Services Contract System. It basically forces tight management of consultant contracts by requiring that the manager provide a certain amount of information relative to cost, whether the money is being spent, in the time we expect it to, how the contractor is doing in terms of its performance, what the contractor's MBE/WBE goals were, and whether or not they're meeting that level of participation, if not, why they're not. And that requires a monthly report to the Board of Public Works on a summary basis, and then a detailed report on a quarterly basis to the Board of Public Works. That would be extremely valuable information that you could receive on a citywide basis, both through the mayor's office and to the city council. And like I said, it does ease the burden that managers have in managing consultant contracts, because it uses an automated system, and it's much quicker that way, and it's a standardized system.
And we just allow each department to handle this issue individually as they choose to? There's no systemization between the different departments in terms of how they handle it?
There is not, and again, this is a system that could be easily adapted throughout the city, and it's been very helpful to the board and to this department.
Well, we'll certainly look at recommending that in the future. Now, when the departments do this analysis, do they do it in consultation with the CLA and the CAO, or do they just do it on their -- pretty much on their own? What did you find in your audit?
I believe it's primarily on their own, but there would be discussions with the CAO if, you know, while the CAO is reviewing their 1022 request.
And how do they review that? What does the CAO do to review that request?
Yeah, that wasn't one of the things that we looked at. We were really looking at -- the focus of the audit was more on whether the contracts that are already executed, whether that followed the proper procedures, and whether they appeared to be an efficient use of resources, an effective use of resources. I think what's important to note is, for the sample that we looked at primarily, there isn't a cost analysis that's done, so it's really based on more of a feasibility reason, that the work may be intermittent nature, it may be that it's not going to be a long-term project, so it wouldn't make sense to hire individuals, hire city staff to do this work. So it wouldn't make sense to hire individuals, hire city staff to do this work for a short term. So the CAO, and they can probably respond to it better, would look at it as whether that's a reasonable explanation for that.
Let me ask the CAO's office that question. I don't know if you've been working closely enough with this to have the answer, but what's the process that the CAO uses to review these 1022 requests?
Well, I think they've explained it in general terms and that's pretty much the extent of what I can probably add. But in general terms, we, Personnel Department makes the first cut on whether city employees can do the work, if they can. Of course, there's a survey of the departments that have those employees, if they can do that work. It comes to the CAO's office for determination, you know, basically if it proceeds past that point on whether we make a fiscal cost analysis of, which is basically more cost effective or a feasibility analysis. And I would concur that most, historically, if you look at our recent analysis, they generally tend to go toward feasibility. This is one of the one points that we did disagree with the auditors in part, in that I believe there, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but they're suggesting certainly that it be enhanced, but that there be a cost analysis on every part, and our office does not believe that is necessary in all cases. There are some clear-cut cases which could be defined and which we don't think cost analysis is necessary, where it clearly is just more feasible to use a contractor. This would be, in the case that's mentioned in the audit, would be intermittent employees, for example, court reporters. We don't have a city class that does that work, so we'd make a determination that would be, because the work is intermittent, it's on-call, it would be more feasible to use contract staff rather than actually staff that function with city employees. We do do fiscal analyses. I think when it calls for it, I think Miguel, what Miguel is basically agreeing to do is to relook at our own internal criteria as to how we review these contracts and to expand the fiscal analysis component. I think he would agree that we need to do, actually focus on that more than we have.
If I could just clarify, our recommendation is really that the cost analysis be done when there's a long-term need and it's going to be an ongoing need. So not, we're not looking for a cost analysis when it's something that's maybe a six-month timeframe, where that wouldn't make sense to hire staff. But in the examples that we found, these were contracts that were really going on for quite some time, where that analysis hadn't been done at the start of the contract to say, does it make sense to continue doing this? So that's where we were, that's our recommendation, where we were coming from with that.
Right. So to make up examples, obviously, if you occasionally used court reporters, you wouldn't keep a court reporter on staff because that would be very intermittent. If you had a contract that was 10 years old for tree trimming, obviously, if you had never done a cost analysis, that would be a big miss. So...
I would agree.
So, well, for now, what I'm going to recommend is that we continue this item for 30 days and instruct the departments and the Controller to come back with a discussion of the implementation based on these reports that are coming back on June 7th. And in the meantime, my office will consider perhaps some additional legislative suggestions as a result of what we've discussed here today. The one other thing I would mention just in passing is that we made some of the same observations in terms of the Charter bus program. I believe the city budget actually eliminated funding for that. But we also discussed the possibility of adding back a more modest level of funding and if we did that, that we would focus on more city-oriented destinations and away from things like trips to Disneyland, et cetera. So we have already heard you on that recommendation loud and clear. So thank you all for your testimony on this item. Item number two.
City Controller Report Relative to a Follow-Up Audit of Concession Contracts at the Department of Recreation and Parks.
Hello.
I'm Siri Culsa with the Controller's Office. The Controller's Office recently issued a follow-up to our March 2008 audit of concession contracting at the Department of Recreation and Parks. The follow-up report was released just on May 5th of this month. The objective of the follow-up review was to assess the department's efforts in implementing the 20 recommendations that were contained in the original audit. The prior audit found that the majority of the concessions had expired contracts and were operating on a month-to-month basis, and the department had not enforced many of the contractual requirements. The audit also noted that the existing business model of contractual relationships with numerous concessionaires, and each one was performing a separate and distinct type of service, was not optimal to maximize revenue or ensure that the type and quality of services met the expectations of park patrons. We recommended that RAP tie their goals for concession operations to a long-range strategic plan that was guided by a community needs assessment. We also recommended that RAP formally evaluate quality and patron satisfaction of the program and consider consolidation to reduce administrative costs and increase revenue. Our audit found that RAP had made very significant progress in updating its concession agreements and had improved oversight and management of the program. While the program is running much more professionally than it had been, the department had not changed the business model itself. The department continues to have more than 50 separate contracts with private entities, each with a specific exclusive right to provide a particular service on park property, subject to their operating agreement. Though a community needs assessment was completed in 2009, RAP has not yet formalized a long-range strategic plan to guide its priorities. The Charter does empower RAP to partner with private businesses to operate concessions for the benefit and enjoyment of the public. So we thought that during this time of declining public resources, that a broader vision for the program, which may include innovative public-private partnerships, could increase the quality and quantity of services that were available and focus RAP's limited resources on its core key activities. We also found that RAP had made minimal progress in assessing service quality and consolidating agreements. For example, the department had surveyed a few food service operators and had consolidated three vending machine agreements into one agreement, but our original recommendation really sought to affect a much broader impact. We did find that RAP had made significant progress in concession oversight. The department had implemented an inspection program to ensure programmatic compliance and they do now require better control of outstanding gift certificates. We also noted that RAP has hired a firm to conduct a three-year fiscal review of Nederlander Greek Incorporated, which was based on our prior recommendation. Also, since many concessionaires are required to make capital improvements on park property, RAP has also hired a project manager to oversee golf capital improvements and does plan to work closely within their own planning and development division to oversee other non-golf-related construction projects.
Thank you. Do we have a response from Recreation and Parks?
Regina Adams, Executive Officer, Recreation and Parks, did all to what she said.
You could do a little better.
No, we appreciate the audit that was done by the Controller's Office and we are trying to implement these recommendations. We have been having several discussions with the Controller's Office regarding the business model. We have asked them if they could point us in a direction, if they know of any other entity out there, something that we could look at so that we can get a better idea of what that means. As far as for a strategic plan, what we are working with, our board as well as our L.A. Parks Foundation and so forth, we are looking at strategically changing this department as far as a reorganization and also too with the upcoming budget, there are going to be changes in our golf division and that could affect what's going to happen with a lot of the concessionaires that we have with the golf. So at this point, we are trying to determine what our future is going to look like and that will definitely have an impact on these concessions that we have out there. We are moving forward with also too trying to figure out if there are other ways that we can do this process. As far as the previous discussion that you just had about contracting out, it is a tedious process and it takes a minimum of a year if that's going, if everything goes well with the various entities that you have to work with within the city and also too working with the various bidders that may apply for a concession. But we are looking at what we can do and better and we are trying to figure out what the future will look like and that will definitely impact here, whatever business model we come up with.
So how do you think the reality of the situation has changed or has it with the newly implemented golf concession?
Well, we've made a lot of progress. I mean, we had a lot of contracts that were out there previously on month-to-month and we brought them in line. You know, we have now gone back and we've also followed up with some of the capital projects that we were supposed to be focusing on, which we had lapsed on. And so now we, as she mentioned, what we've done now, we've put things in place that we're following up to make sure that the concessionaires are complying with the guidance of the agreements that they have with us.
So as an example, what's the next step for the improvements at the Rancho Park Golf Course?
Well, I couldn't tell you that at this moment because at this time, we have a lot of things that are on hold because we have been directed by the mayor and the council now to go back and look at possibly what's going to be the future for golf. There's some things, you know, that we either will look at possibly bringing it all in-house, the operations, which could include the concession agreements that we have at this time, or it could be something that we continue in a privatization effort. I can't answer that at this time. There are a lot of things that we have to look at and see what's going to happen. When we do go out to bid on these contracts, a lot of them are long-term contracts with a minimum usually about 10 years. So we have to look and see what we're going to do.
Well, the last golf concession, RFP, I think was generally considered to be kind of a disaster. Have we identified the best practices since then to avoid that kind of a situation?
No. No. As I stated, we're trying to understand because we're getting various directives from the council as well as from the Controller's Office. And what we may think is, our board may think is, one way to go. We're trying to figure out how do we mesh all of these different insights that we're getting from various entities. And just to say, at this point, I couldn't tell you what it's going to look like. But our board is taking it very seriously. We have a concession task force that is made up of two of our board members and they're very, they're looking very much into this and keying in so that they can make a recommendation to our full board.
That sounds like a good thing. Have you looked at other municipalities that are known to do this well and found best practices yet that you can identify or are you still in that process?
We're still in that process because we're so different than a lot of the other cities and municipalities out there. That's why I say there's nothing that really we can just look at and say, this is the way to go. So we're trying to find various things out there and then see what we think maybe we could comply and apply to us.
Now, I know the Controller's Office had suggested that there are examples of public-private partnerships that work. Can you give us a couple of examples of those that you've seen and identified?
Generally, any type of broad public-private partnership exists when there is significant untapped value within the marketplace, something that the city currently controls in-house that maybe could be done by a private entity. Our original audit looked at how other municipalities, other rec and parks departments throughout the country operated their concession programs. You're right, it does vary from, say, the city of San Francisco, which has more than, you know, the number that our city has of individual contracts. But then you've got the city of Sacramento that has basically outsourced the entire golf operations, as does the county of Los Angeles. The Chicago Parks District is a separate, completely separate entity that basically has two primary contracts, one for property management, the other that basically oversees all types of concessions from food service to other types of amusements. There are a number of different ways to go. That's why we really recommend that the department really looks, needs to look at that what is their long-range strategic plan to leverage their internal resources and their internal strengths to what they want to be focusing on and if there is an opportunity to partner with outside agencies that maybe this is their core business rather than the city's, that there may be some benefit on both sides.
Well, thank you. I'm going to suggest that we note and file the Controller's audit and that we make a couple of instructions, that we instruct Rec and Parks to identify business models used by other large municipalities for concession operations and report back to us at an appropriate point on that. Direct Rec and Parks to report back to committee on ways to improve the request for proposal process so we don't see the kind of mistakes that led to the failure of the department to grant a golf concession contract. And direct the CAO, CLA, and Rec and Parks to report back on how the experience and know-how exhibited can improve Recreation and Parks' experience and then how that could be done for other city departments. And I don't know what an appropriate time would be to have that report back. Three months, six months? What's your timing look like?
If we could have six months, that would be appreciated.
Okay, that would be fine. So let's have that report back in six months. Thank you. If we could move on to item number three.
City Controller Report Relative to the Audit of Citywide Fixed Assets and Equipment.
Rick Toguchi, Controller's Office. Our audit was issued on May 3rd. The objective of the audit was to evaluate city department controls over fixed assets and equipment, including computer equipment. In completing our audit, we visited three different departments, Information Technology Agency, Sanitation and Recreation and Parks. We selected these departments based on a variety of factors such as the number and dollar value of items in their inventories. In terms of our findings, our findings are similar to what we found at other departments during other types of audits that we've conducted over the last several years. For example, we couldn't locate a high percentage of items listed in CAMs and SOS. Now, CAMs is the centralized asset management system. It's used to record items over $5,000 that have a useful life of at least three years. For items under $5,000, it's optional whether for departments to track those items within the CAM system. SOS is used to track computer-type equipment items. So during our initial inventory observations, we could not find about 45% of the items that we tried to locate. Eventually, departments were able to locate several of those items, bringing it down to about 25% that were not located. But even if the departments were able to locate all the items, the main issue is that they should have been able to identify and locate them a lot quicker. And part of the problem is that the information in the system does not allow departments to easily find those items. For example, we often find vague descriptions in the system that just says like machine tools. A lot of times, the serial numbers are not recorded, asset tag numbers are not recorded. And sometimes, often the location is real general. The location would just say, for example, for a RAP, it's at 3900 Chevy Chase for all their assets. We had another situation where it just says Hyperion Treatment Plant for the location. And part of the problem is within the system itself. The system, for example, CAMs does not allow, it only has one field for location. Ideally, it should have maybe three fields, perhaps a field for general location, another field for a more specific location such as a room number, and perhaps another field that would record who's responsible for those items. Because of these limitations, departments are using some of their own systems. We saw that at RAP has a system called Tracket that they're using for their equipment items. The long-term solution would be to have a, one citywide system that would accommodate different department needs. However, with the budget crisis, you know, that's a long-term solution, a pretty lofty goal at this point. So in the meantime, our recommendation is for departments to use the systems that have been designated to track those items. Another finding that we had was we observed items on the floor to see if we can find those items recorded in the system. And we also selected samples of purchases that were made to determine whether those items were recorded in either CAMs and SOS. And of the 167 items sampled, we couldn't locate 50% in one of those systems. Departments do not always conduct required physical inventories. They're required to conduct biennial inventories of their fixed assets and, for example, ITA and sanitation had not conducted those inventories for at least five years. And then finally, RAP and ITA had a total of 138 items that had been purchased over one year prior to our audit that had not yet been placed in service. Some of the items have been purchased as many as seven years ago and the total value of those was $250,000. For example, RAP had 53 computers and monitors that had been... 53 computers and monitors that had been in a storage area for one or two years that had not been placed in service. And they acknowledged that they should have been placed in service, but that they didn't have a good process in place to make sure that items that were purchased first were the first ones to use. So, for example, it's possible that an item that was bought in 2008 could be placed in service before an item that was placed in service before 2007. And the problem with computers, as you know, is they become outdated pretty quickly. So, these computers, you know, were not put in place for, like, two years after purchase.
A lot of this stuff seems almost unbelievable to the outside observer, and almost equally unbelievable to the inside observer. I don't know how we got to this point, but are you aware of how well that's been implemented? These recommendations for changes have been implemented?
No, our process is to request the response 30 days after the audit. The audit was issued on May 3rd, so they're not due until next week. We just got one from Recreation and Parks yesterday that we need to evaluate.
I wonder if we could have, one by one, a representative from Recreation and Parks, sanitation, and ITA, if you're all available. Why don't we start with Recreation and Parks?
Regina Adams, once again, from Recreation and Parks. For this Controller's Audit, yes, when the audit just came out, there were some equipment items that they could not find readily at the moment when they were there, and we have several reasons for that. One is that what we do is, we may have our equipment shown in our system at one location, but of course, we have many field locations, and so our equipment can usually be assigned there. And we centralize it, because we use equipment that doesn't necessarily stay at one location, and so we move it around. So, that's part of why they couldn't find some of the items. The other thing is that, which we have now changed, is that we do have some equipment that comes in, such as you mentioned, as computers, and we were not applying the process of doing the first-in, first-out, because we have thousands of computers, and we have a small amount of staff that are trying to keep up with the various computers and so forth. And so, that is something now we are changing, so that we can get the older equipment out much faster than the newer equipment. We also have situations where we do hold equipment, and we keep it in the warehouses for various reasons. For example, we have programs where we serve food to children and so forth, and so we keep some refrigerators in the warehouses, because if we have one that breaks down, we have to immediately be able to switch out refrigerators and so forth. So, we do sometimes hold on to equipment for those types of purposes.
Okay, and how about from sanitation? Do we have a representative here?
Good afternoon. Michelle McManus from sanitation. I'm in charge of administrative services. We appreciate the Controller's Audit, and I think we're anxious to work with the Controller. The Bureau of Sanitation has extensive internal systems, which are partially required because of the fact that our major programs, specifically our sewer fund, is an enterprise fund. The department developed its own in-house asset management system because of the fiduciary responsibilities that the enterprise fund has. And it's much more inclusive than CAMs, and it's somewhat more sophisticated. Basically, while CAMs is primarily into items over $5,000 that are generally mobile, our enterprise fund asset management system considers all major assets, which include digestors, large generators that are plants, as well as lab equipment, and other things which are what CAMs is primarily interested in. It also contains our fleet. It also contains servers and systems equipment that's over $5,000. Rather than trying to go to a lot of varied resources, fleet is contained in a general services system. CAMs has another piece or segment. We have it all together in our one system. Also, our system allows for depreciation of costs, which CAMs does not have. And as regard to systems, we also have an extensive internal system called Tracket. And in addition to monitoring its asset value, it also tracks warranties and licenses. We recently had an extensive audit of Oracle licenses, and because of our Tracket system, there were no findings, to my knowledge. So, while we work with Controller in regards to putting those pieces that belong in CAMs, we find that for our special purposes, our internal systems have unique value.
So, where do you stand in terms of responding to the Controller's Audit?
Well, we will work with them. Since the, the other problem with CAMs is that it's, it needs a lot of cleanup, and it's very labor-intensive. So, actually, the Controller, first of all, is to try and clean up a lot of grandfathered 20-year-old furniture and other type of equipment that's really no longer relative or relevant. And then, since there are, we feel, we will work with them, A, the best thing to do is to work with them to see if we can unload or upload things from our internal system to CAMs. Secondly, we'll definitely work with Controller in working with getting a better system citywide that might be able to meet our needs, as well as, say, other departments where they don't have enterprise fund requirements. Also, Controller was very helpful. I think all of us have that in-between layer, where we have equipment under $5,000 that we have looser internal controls. Perhaps we should look for ways to better control those items that are probably defined to be easily misplaced, lost, or susceptible to theft. Things like televisions, cameras, and things like that.
Great, thank you. And if we could also, if there's an ITA rep here to discuss this
Hi, Laura Ito with ITA. We also appreciate the Controller's recommendations as an opportunity for us to refocus on this issue and improve our practices. As Recan Parks stated, we have a similar situation, where we have a lot of field workers. So, some of the equipment that was not located initially was used by field workers, whether it's our communications staff, or our Channel 35 production staff, bringing cameras out to production areas. So, some of that is just the nature of our work with so many field locations. But we also recognize there's room for improvement in our tracking. We appreciate that the Controller included some recommendations as far as future ways of using technology. Ideally, we shouldn't have to double-enter equipment in terms of purchasing it and then subsequently inventorying it. It really should come out of our SMS purchasing system. So, that would be, you know, a hopeful eventuality, that we would be able to use that as a means of tracking, because the serial number and all of the descriptors are already entered at one point. But in the meantime, we realize we need to go back and work with the systems that we have. We are constrained in having programmers that can make the adaptations to those systems that were suggested by the Controller, both SMS and CAMs. We really have few people with that expertise, and fewer people even to devote to that effort. So, we recognize that departments have their own shadow systems, and they do things to compensate for what is lacking in terms of the tracking system. But to the extent that we can, we will work with the Controller to make any changes to those systems, so that it can be a citywide inventory system.
Now, my staff has done some minimal research, and we found that there are also GPS-related systems, like a fixed asset tracking software that's available sort of off the rack, and that you can attach it to an item and be able to track every item in the system. Have we looked at those systems? And if so, have we looked at recommending them as something we should be implementing?
I don't think we've considered that to be a practical approach, given that, you know, the cost of implementing something like that.
Do we know what those costs would be, and have we actually done a real analysis of this subject?
Good afternoon. Mark Wolf with ITA. I know that through our past discussions and looking at various technologies, we have leveraged, for example, barcode technology for inventorying to improve the efficiency of bringing in and taking out of inventory various items. And General Services has worked with us in actually utilizing some of those capabilities for different assets in the city. But that's something that could definitely greatly be expanded upon. The technology that I think you're referring to is, there's an acronym RFID, and it's a way of providing or adding a more intelligent barcode tracking capability, if you will, that has the ability to actually, when you carry an asset out of a location, it almost has like a security-type equipment at the front door that would then monitor and track when an asset leaves and when an asset comes back. Some of the departments in the city, like the City Clerk's Office, has actually implemented that capability in the past 12 months for the elections, and for all of the supplies that go out to the, you know, over 1,000 polling places in the city. So, I think there's definitely room for improvement in terms of taking advantage of new technologies that are available that could enhance the city's efficiency in doing audit, excuse me, in terms of doing asset tracking.
And I think this one is even more sophisticated, because it doesn't just track it in and out, it actually tracks the item.
The physical location.
You could find the location at any time. And if we haven't looked at that, I think we really should do some more serious analysis of it.
That's something that we'll do.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I would, on this item, again, continue it for 30 days and instruct the departments to report back once they have a written report with an audit implementation plan. And I would also ask ITA to come back with a report on this more up-to-date technology, and my staff can give you the information on it to give you a little head start.
Thanks.
So, thank you very much. And now, if we could do item number four?
Controller Report Relative to Audits at the Department of Public Works and Department of Transportation on Their Use of American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Grants.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Good afternoon. Fairytale Private Controller's Office. We are in the process of completing our two audits of auto-related project at DOT and Public Works. The letter before you is a heads-up and a precursor to our final reports, which will be issued shortly, and we'll discuss the issues raised in the letter, as well as other issues that we have. The reason we issued an interim letter was because of the use of force account for auto-related project by Street Services. We wanted to bring it to the attention of decision-makers, that the practice of using force account may be questioned by federal funding agencies. So, the Controller recommended CAO's clarification and authorization from funding agencies before the city incurs any expenditure when planning to use force account for auto-related projects. Specifically, during the audit, it came to our attention that Federal Highway Administration questioned Street Services for the use of force account for some of his auto-related projects. In November 2009, FHA through Caltrans instructed Street Services for projects that have not been incurred any expenditure before August 2009, that they should advertise and construct by competitive bid, meaning that not to use city forces to do the work. As I said before, the more detailed explanation of other issues, including the use of force account, will be forthcoming in our two audits that we expect to be completed in the next few weeks.
Now, what's the rationale behind Caltrans requiring that the work not be done by city workers?
I believe one of the auto requirement is to have the funding out in the public to stimulate jobs and create jobs. And for that reason, they have asked, to the extent possible, that work to be done on the basis of competitive bidding and to be bid it out.
So, in other words, they would prefer to see city workers laid off to create jobs elsewhere in the business community?
I can answer for what the intention is, but that's what the auto regulation is. Of course, there is an exception to the rule. If city obtains prior authorization for the use of force account, my understanding is it would be granted.
Are we doing that kind of thing?
Some of the projects with the Street Service, I believe they have already, like, eight projects, seven of them, they have obtained prior authorization for use of force account, and we are okay with that. And that's why the Controller recommended for any future project, if we intend to use force account, we should also go ahead and obtain prior authorization.
If I could clarify. Actually, Cynthia Faral with the Controller's Office. Each of these projects, there were eight projects that Street Services had notified the agencies, Caltrans and FHWA, that they would be using force account, internal staff to do the construction work. They received approval when they, and noticed to proceed for each of those grants. Subsequently, there was more emphasis on going through competitive bid processes. Force account work is typically allowed under the regular federal highway projects and funding. But with ERA, there was more emphasis that they should be competitively bidding it. And so, subsequent to giving that authorization, they then said if projects had not received their authorization to proceed, and if they'd not incurred expenses as of August 31st, that then they were to advertise and competitively bid for those projects, and that affected one of the eight projects.
So, seven of them were already far enough in the process that they weren't affected?
Correct. They had incurred expenses, so they were allowed to proceed.
But future projects would be impacted, one presumes?
Potentially, yes.
Unless they obtain prior authorization.
Do we see a good approach to this situation? I mean, is there some way to have our city representatives or lobbyists work with the administration to get them to understand this, the problem that they could be creating jobs on one end and eliminating them on the other, and I'm sure it's not a problem unique to the city of Los Angeles, as a lot of major cities are forced to lay off workers? Have we looked at this?
Maybe CAO can answer that question.
Good afternoon. Anna May Uten from the CAO. Actually, in terms of the issue and the use of the force account, it's only an issue in this grant. All of the other ERA grants that the city received, there is no issue. I think part of it is because the city, for this grant, received $60 million on projects that we use force account. So, out of the $123 million that we receive for transportation, $60 million of that are on projects where the city have used force account. I guess because of that big amount, there's more of a review in those projects.
So, have we done what I just suggested? Tried to work with the federal government, with our representatives, to get them to understand the impacts of the economy upon the city workforce as well, and the fact that they may be creating jobs on one hand that could just as easily keep city workers' jobs?
Councilmember David Hirono from the CAO's office. Yes, we have done that. The mayor's office has done that, Bureau of Street Services has done that. Everyone associated with these projects has communicated that message to the federal government, and I believe the state has cooperated with us in transmitting that message. So, that message has gone through loud and clear.
Have they paid attention? Are they still considering it, or have they just blown us off in terms of that?
I think the decision that was reached, that the Controller described to you, is a result of communicating that message. So, there was, in the original RA language, there was language that allowed for job retention, as well as job creation, and we relied on that, and we communicated our position that not laying off city workers was comparable to creating a new job, and that message went back loud and clear. And I think that is probably why we were at the place where we are now, where we are allowed to continue to use force account and city workers on everything except... the one project.
Is there any kind of an appeals process if a contract is disallowed for that reason?
I don't know that we've reached that point yet where the federal government has come into look and determine whether we have disallowed costs yet, but if they do start disallowing it on that basis, we will again communicate objections. And if you'd like to join us in making that communication, we'd, we're happy to have you.
I would, I would certainly be delighted to participate in that. When did we find out about this issue, and why did it come to our attention somewhat late in the process? Are the regulations unclear, or was it just they changed the implementation of it?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Ron Olive, Assistant Director of Bureau of Street Services. It's really, it's Article 1554 of the Ara language. It's the specific paragraph that sets a higher threshold for competitive bidding versus force account being the last resort. And we were always aware of it, but as you've mentioned, the job retention, we felt was a strong argument as well as job creation. So we were actually awarded all, $53 million for street services in force account projects in June of last year. And we actually started incurring charges, and for some reason, then it became an issue under the microscope. And, and then they actually came out and gave us four different process reviews, field reviews, as well as a specific process review in December of last year, just on the force account issue. Through those, I think we've come to agreements, we've communicated both sides to the issues very well, and they have allowed us to proceed with the seven of the eight projects. Now, the only project that had not incurred costs at that point was a $300,000 project, so less than...
So not a huge impact?
Half of 1% for, again, for street services. And we actually have billed over $16 million, and we've received over $13 million already with a little bit of a lag there, and there's been no issues with disallowed costs at this point.
Have other jurisdictions run into the same problem? Do we know?
Well, we've, we've had folks from back east, from Sacramento, representatives from FHWA, they keep telling us that really, we are by far the largest force account user on the Ara projects. I think there was, I believe it was San Francisco up north that was also a pretty large user, but I think we're kind of the test case, and that's why they've come down four different times. We also had the office, have the inspector general come down, not necessarily on the force account issue, but we've been assessed several times on, on this and many other issues and come through it.
So any other logical steps for us to be taking to, to deal with this issue?
I just might mention, again, only for street services, that the eighth project is actually in design, and we are fully planning to bid that out for private construction. So there's no issue for us on this phase of Ara. If there are future Ara phases that come out, at this point, we're going to plan to contract up that work because it is such a, a high burden that we'd have to prove as a last resort for force account.
So we, have we conceded that, or are we, are we still going to at least make the attempt?
I think for us, again, we have the $53 million, which originally we were going to try to spend in one year, but because of E-RIP and, and hiring freezes, we've actually spread that out over three years. So we, we have plenty of work under Ara to keep us busy for three years. So we really haven't put an emphasis on, on trying to change that mindset for future Ara awards.
So I know we just passed a resolution in support of federal legislation, which could generate many billions of dollars in, in city funding projects, and is likened to the WPA from, from many years ago. If that passes fully funded, this would be a question of massive numbers of jobs and certainly probably more than, than we could ever handle as, as a purely city effort, but one would hope we'd at least be allowed to use that to, to maintain our workforce fully. So I would hope we, we wouldn't just give up without a fight if we were allocated a chunk of such a massive amount of dollars that would, would really certainly determine our ability to, to maintain hundreds of jobs and prevent layoffs. So I would hope we would at least reconsider taking another shot at making that argument.
It was, a few months ago, there was actually applications being accepted for an Ara Phase Two. We don't know what the likelihood of that going forward is, but it was almost a what-if, if you will. But there was an opportunity of maybe as much as $30 million being available to street services, and we did put a package in for building handicapped access ramps, curb cuts, if you will. And just as you're saying, a partnership with, you know, maybe with CDD and with other WA, WPA-type workforce training programs. We were looking at a partnership like that, which we felt was not going to be classified as force account, but it was going to be kind of a quasi-private partnership. So we were going to argue on that front. We don't know what, you know, what success we're going to have in getting an award there at this point.
Oh, that sounds like at least a decent compromise approach. Do you have a comment also?
Councilmember, one, one thing I do want to point out is, when this last round of awards came through, we were in a slightly different position than we hoped to be in in the, in the near future, and, and that we were looking at the potential layoff of a significant number of city employees. I think in the future, in the near future, in forthcoming years, while we are going to have to cut back our budget, we obviously hope to not be in that place again. And the Bureau of Street Services right now, they are, they have a lot of special-funded roadwork that's been provided to the bureau. So, you know, in the next couple of years, we're hoping to actually not have to be in a place where we have to consider laying off bureau employees, but we, we plan to have way more work than they, than they probably have staff for right now at this point. So when, if, if an award comes through like that, we will obviously have to look at the resources we have in hand and whether there is another strategy that may be more appropriate just for that reason alone. But we will keep you apprised, and if we can use your help in lobbying the federal government, we would definitely appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Well, thank you, and I think we will note and file the controller report, and I believe that is the last item, and so we are adjourned.